All right. Emily, I was hoping she'd be here. Is she here? No? Emily's not here tonight?
State your name and address for the record.
Doug Furlack, 6795 Joliet Avenue South.
Okay.
Just here to, I mean, we have a group here. We're not opposed to the townhome at all.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Sure, go ahead.
This is open forum.
Sure.
It sounds to me like this item is already, the Woodward-Pond case that we're going to be hearing. That's on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
So, at this time, anybody wanting to speak on an item that is not already on the agenda, this is their...
I'm really open for him. I can just go.
You can talk about anything but what's on the agenda.
Within reason.
So, any takers? No? All right. We'll close public forum. Or open forum. Item number five on our agenda is Chair's Explanation of the Hearing Process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the City Council. One of the commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak must step up to the podium and give their name and address before addressing the commission. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and Planning Commission in advance of the meeting. The first step in the hearing process will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have the opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comments. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed to the public comments. The Planning Commission will then discuss and act on the matter. Two complete agenda packets are available for viewing on the back table. Please do not remove these items. The City Council will act on these items at their meeting on Wednesday, January 15, 2020, which starts at 7:00 p.m. At this time, we will move forward with item 6.1, Woodward-Pond's Cases Zoning Amendment 2019-050 and Preliminary Platte 2019-051, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The item before you this evening is an application for a zoning amendment and preliminary plat. The zoning amendment is to change the zoning of 28 acres from currently zoned agricultural preservation to medium-density residential with a planned unit development, as well as a request for a preliminary plat for 164 residential lots of multifamily units. Excuse me. The location of the property is located just north of Military Road, and I should preface that with saying it was, in fact, four separate parcels. One parcel owned by the Watershed District, two parcels owned by Kotners, and one parcel owned by the Kaisers. It is just south of the newly constructed Ravine Parkway and just west of Keats Avenue. I will note that the Knutson Tree Farm property is just the west, as well as Stony Brook Villas, which was an improved plat back in 2018. Construction has not commenced with that proposed development, but I just wanted to make note, to give you an idea of where we were looking. There are, in fact, two residences that do exist. Those homes will be demolished as a part of the process, as a part of the development. Currently, it is mostly tilled fields. There are some tree buffers that kind of meander throughout the properties as well. The preliminary plat, again, as I mentioned, is for 164 attached family units. Some of them will be row townhomes, and those are located in around this area. And then the other product that they are proposing are triplex and fourplex units, which will be on more the north side of the proposed development. It will be an entirely HOA-maintained development. The developer did also host a neighborhood meeting on November 5. I believe they did invite folks within 500 feet of the property to come and just have an informal conversation about the proposed development and hear any concerns or thoughts that they might have. I just wanted to note that I will elaborate on some of the comments that staff did hear during that meeting. So, the comprehensive plan is ultimately the city's, excuse me, overarching planning document for its growth and where development is going to happen and how that will look within the community. Both the 2030 and the 2040 comprehensive plan do guide this particular area for medium density. And when I say medium density, that allows for four to 10 units per acre. The developer has proposed about 5.69 units per acre, so about six, so that is below the maximum 10 units per acre. The city then enforces zoning districts within the community, and these allow for more specific development standards as a part of these proposed projects. The zoning district does, in fact, have to align with that land use in the comprehensive plan, so with a proposed R5 or medium-density residential proposal that does align with that comprehensive plan guidance. I also did want to mention that the East Ravine Master Plan does also guide this particular small area as medium or high-density. Now, this master plan was completed back in 2006, and it was a plan that was more overarching or the larger East Ravine area. But I just wanted to make note that even in 2006, this area was still guided as medium So, the developer is proposing three separate accesses into the development, two of which will connect to existing stubs in the East Ridge Woods development, Jocelyn and Joliet Avenues, and then at Joliet Avenue on the north side, it will connect to Ravine Parkway. Those will be those three access points. There will also be two future accesses or connections or road extensions, however you want to look at it, as development continues to the west. So, Jocelyn Avenue will, in fact, probably extend further to the west, and 65th Street will continue to extend to the west as well as a part of the Stony Brook Villas project. So, those will extend all the way to Keats Avenue. All of the proposed streets are public streets. There is, in fact, the one private street that has been proposed, and that's Johansson Avenue, so that will be maintained by the HOA. I would also like to note that all of these streets will require address range signs. This is a comment that we receive continuously from Public Safety to ensure that when they're called to the area, that they have easy directional signage to where they need to go with these multifamily unit buildings. So, I wanted to reiterate again, as we know, there have been a lot of comments and concerns about the access to the development. So, as a part of the East Ridge Woods plat, I believe this was back in 2013, 2014, was when that process took place and started. As you can see, there were two stubbed access points at Military Road as a part of the East Ridge Woods development. So, this is Jocelyn Avenue, and it notes a temporary cul-de-sac to be installed. And then this is Joliet, and it notes that this is a temporary dead end. So, at that time of development, it was noted and understood that these streets, as development continued, would be through streets to be able to connect to Ravine Parkway. And again, as a part of the comprehensive plan, I wanted to note that Joliet, in the 2030 and the 2040 plan, has indicated as a neighborhood collector through a street to connect from Indian Boulevard all the way up to Ravine Parkway. And as a part of the approval of the East Ridge Woods at these stubbed streets, the developer was required to install the appropriate barricades and signage to indicate that that would, in fact, be a future road extension. So, the sidewalk and trail connections, again, at the East Ridge Woods development, the sidewalk will connect there and continue throughout the proposed development and ultimately on a single side of each of the streets. This will allow for connectivity from East Ridge Woods from the south all the way to the north, and again, to the north to the south, however folks want to move through the development. Military Road, as a part of this project, will ultimately be removed completely from Joliet Avenue all the way down to Keats Avenue. So, the road will be removed, and as a part of the project, a trail will be installed. So, this trail will connect, I believe, to this existing portion of the historic military trail corridor. This trail will be meandering. I just wanted to make note of that. It won't just be a straight corridor through the roadbed, as there are some manholes that are going to be avoided. So, it will be a nice meandering trail. There'll be some landscaping to maintain a buffer there between the neighborhoods as Park access. Our long-range planning does not propose any parks within this particularly proposed development, but we have indicated that Glacial Hill Park Master Plan has been proposed on the north side of Ravine Parkway, and this is one of the largest parks that is proposed within the East Ravine area. This park will have multiple different ballfields, hockey rink, all sorts of different options, wonderful open space for folks, easily accessible, again, from this particular neighborhood just to the north across Ravine Parkway. There are two proposed storm basins on the site. One, as you can see, on the north side here, which will provide a great buffer from Ravine Parkway to the start of this proposed development, and then in this southeast corner, a smaller basin as well. Future utility extensions will be required as a part of this development, as you can see here at Jocelyn and then again at 65th. So, the developer will be required to secure a private easement between themselves and the property owner to extend those utilities. That way, at the time that these properties develop, those utilities are easily accessible, and they don't need to interrupt any already existing infrastructure to extend those through as development continues. The applicant has provided a tree inventory, as well as, as you can see, a landscape plan. The tree inventory has indicated that they'll actually be removing more trees than they're permitted, so they have proposed to mitigate and replant a handful of those trees. I do want to make note, though, that they are maintaining the mature tree buffer that is along Military Road, again, to maintain that buffer between the two developments and let that trail corridor continue to be wooded, as is currently. So, again, the developer is required to replace the mitigated trees, landscape requirements, as well as boulevard trees. So, that's quite a large number of trees. So, the developer has proposed a plan that does not include all of the required trees to be planted. So, we're working with our city forester to make sure that we're planting trees that are going to be able to be maintained long into the future. We don't want to overcrowd the space. So, we're working with them to hopefully plant some of their required trees along the trail corridor, as well as maybe within some open space, Glacial Hill Park, for example, with, so our park director will work with them on that to make sure the placement of those trees is appropriate. I will also note that the code does require five shrubs per unit, so there will, in fact, be landscaping up along the buildings as well. So, we'll move into the architecture. Now, the applicant has proposed two separate building types, I'll say. One is a triplex or a fourplex. I've only included the triplex for a visual. These, again, these proposed buildings will be along the north side of the property. They do, in fact, have a mix of architectural materials, different roof pitches, things like that, giving it a little bit more of a single-family feel. The proposed square feet for these structures is 1,780 square feet to 2,230 square feet, with a price range between $345,000 and $385,000. And this is just a rear view to make note that this will be the potential rear backup to Ravine Parkway. Again, this particular structure does include a basement level, so, again, giving it just a little bit more of a single-family feel. And then their third product type is a more of a row townhome, and as you noticed, those were on the southeast, really, corner of this proposed development. They will all be front-loaded, except for along that private street. They will be rear-loaded. And they are 1,700 to 2,100 square feet, and the approximate price range is $280,000 to So, with that, I will leave with the recommendation. Myself, as well as the applicant and their engineer are available if there are any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and state their name and address and provide any additional information regarding the project.
Mr. Commissioner, Planning Commissioners, Paul Donae with Donae Homes, 9655 63rd Avenue North in Maple Grove. And we're here, and I also have John with M&amp;I Homes here, to answer any questions, architecture or transportation, whatever you may have.
So, one of my questions is, given some of your other developments, how does this compare with some of the other build-outs you've done in the area? Is it in keeping with size and kind of trying to kind of wrap, build the neighborhood into some of the existing architecture to kind of help keep things conducive? Or what is your guys' approach with regard to each individual neighborhood? Do you tailor it to the specific needs of each community? Or do you guys have, like, a one specific line of product that you use everywhere?
John wants to speak to the architecture on that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. John Rask with M&amp;I Homes. We will be the builder in the project. Paul is the project developer. Just a 15-second infomercial on M&amp;I Homes. M&amp;I entered this market about four years ago, purchased Hans Hagen Homes. I was with Hans Hagen, so for many years prior to that, I won't age myself. But in terms of this townhome community, it's, you know, we're building, I would say, similar communities in Victoria, Minatrista. We're doing a redevelopment in North St. Paul. As the market has improved for townhomes, we're back in the townhome business, if you will. There was a period of time there where the market had shifted, and we just weren't doing a lot of townhome projects. But historically, when you look at a townhome community like this, it's providing a variety of product. It's not much different than single-family. They're attached, single-family homes, and, you know, the buyer profile tends to be, in some cases, similar, but will be a little more diverse here because what we have in the three- and four-unit buildings are main-floor masters to appeal to an empty-nester buyer. Probably half to two-thirds of the units that are in those buildings will really be geared toward that older demographic, or anybody, I should say, that seeks single-level living. I'm getting closer to that all the time, so I can appreciate it. But, and then the other, the row townhomes, again, we see a variety of buyer for those from young people without children, single people. We see older demographics. We see people, you know, may want to get into the, you know, school district at a better price point. And then divorcees tend to be a big part of that demographic. So, hard to describe in today's world because it really is pretty broad in its scope. So, when we look at a neighborhood like this, it's introducing the three different product types so that we're hitting a really broad segment of the home-buying market out there and some different price points. We allow townhome buyers to come into our decorating studio, make selections, customize their homes. We will have certain units that we build to have available for more immediate occupancy, but for buyers that want to come in and customize, pick out tiles, cabinets, flooring, all of those things, it's treated just like a single-family home, so that they're able to do that. So, again, as we've looked at the Cottage Grove market and really what we feel's needed, it's really kind of maybe that step-up of a townhome where people can still have some choices in how it looks and feels. And so, I probably rambled on and went farther than you wanted, but wanted to just give you that background.
So, you're saying that there's a high demand for this product, and it has broad appeal?
Correct. Yep. It, I said, I think there's hardly a demographic segment that I would say we miss with this because we've been able to incorporate, really, three different townhome styles within this community.
Okay. Thank you.
I did have a question as well. How are you phasing this out from a building standpoint? I mean, it's, that's a lot of units to try to build. How are you looking at it?
Yeah. So, we will try to introduce all three townhome styles in the first phase, but essentially, the project will get phased from north to south. We do need to make the connection to, where is it? We do need to make a utility connection down in here.
Other side.
Other side. This new technology. So, down in here, there's a utility connection, but essentially, the first phase is, don't quote me on the exact number of units, but something like this. And then we'll proceed, depending on demand and how different units sell, will really dictate, but planning to construct the improvements in two phases in terms of the site development. In terms of development timing, I would say it's probably a four- or five-year total build-out is what we anticipate, somewhere around, say, 30 to 40 homes a year is what we would anticipate sales pace to be in this neighborhood.
All right. Any additional questions or comments from staff, or for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Rasmussen?
Regarding construction traffic, are you going to be able to keep all of your traffic from East Ravine onto Joliet, or is there going to be any need to have construction traffic going through the neighborhood to your south?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we couldn't keep it all off East Ravine. I don't, Paul, I think there would be no reason that we would have to get...
We're going to, we're going to hold any public comment. We're going to, we're going to get through the applicant, and then when we open the public hearing, everyone in the audience will have their opportunity to approach the podium and make their comments. If you could continue.
Yeah. So, hopefully, that answered the question. Some of it, well, just depending on...
And I'm sure you're going to work out the traffic needs with staff and with the city.
Yep. Exactly. If there are certain things that I'm not aware of, but I don't see why we couldn't keep it off East Ravine.
So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out, this will be the area, is this showing up right now?
I think you got to use the other side.
I see.
Yeah, there you go.
So, right about in here, for being, that's where our construction entrance is going to be. So, that's where we're going to bring in all the heavy. When I'm grading this and bringing in the sewer and water contractors, that'll be our main entrance.
So, you're kind of phasing it from the top down, from north to south?
Yeah. We've got to make that, the one connection down here, so we do have to come through and bring this up, but this first phase will be in the area that John outlined.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? Commissioner Zoffey?
Could we have staff speak to the neighborhood meeting and what was discussed and, I guess, points of contention or anything else that you've talked to the developer about?
I can say that the neighborhood meeting staff kind of sits in the back and lets the developer have those conversations. So, what we heard or kind of took away, the biggest concern seemed to be the increased traffic with those road connections to the neighboring development, that, and then potential for increased speeds on those roads as well. So, again, I can let the developer speak to any other conversations that he might have had at the meeting, but like I say, staff, you know, is just there to kind of soak those conversations.
So, at this point, we haven't discussed those topics with the developer? Was this the neighborhood and developer on those two?
At that time.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, there were probably, I don't know, six or seven couples that came, probably, and I talked to all of them personally. And they were concerned about traffic through here, and I explained to them, well, I kind of waited to develop this because I wanted Ravine Parkway to get finished, and I'm contributing through special assessments about a quarter of a million dollars to that work through special assessments, so that this community should be able to flow out to Ravine and then over to Keats. And eventually, when we go off to the east, down in here, that'll be a direct route for this group of townhomes to go right out to Keats and then over to 70th, or over to 61.
Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Rasmussen?
I have one more question or comment. I guess in the southwest portion of your development, where Jaclyn Avenue would meet 20 or the new path area there, those two units with units 1, 2, and 3, and 32, 33, and 34, they appear to be, like, right off the setback line, and looking at the landscape plan, it almost looks like we're landscaping around them, but they're, they're the closest two buildings, I guess, to Military there is. Wondering if you can have your engineer team look at that and the way that road kind of curves up around there, and we've got some of those triangles. If there's any opportunity to make those a little tighter, get those a little bit further back from the setback to try to get some sort of birmingham or additional trees?
What have we got for setbacks there, Paul?
Has that been addressed in the land? This might be a question for staff, but has that been addressed in the landscaping plan?
We can pull. Maybe this will help the conversation. Is that what you're asking, Mr. Rasmussen?
Sure. So, the landscaping plan, you see it covers everything, really, except the two sides of those two buildings.
In here?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. We have extensive landscaping, and we're maintaining all the trees down here that are here, and we should be able to pull, with the amount of landscaping we're doing here, we should be able to do some nice birmingham and landscaping here to soften that.
I think that would help.
To the joining.
It's a little tight.
Yeah.
Again, we're going to refrain until we're at the podium. Thank you.
Sorry.
I have another question.
Commissioner Conneil, go ahead.
Maybe for staff or whoever, but was Joliet designed for the traffic flow that would be increased with the number of homes coming up?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Joliet was planned before this development handled this traffic. You could see...
What's his name?
Ryan Burfind. I'm our Public Works Director and City... Burfind?
Burfind.
Again.
Public Works Director and City Engineer.
He introduced himself and said his address. Everybody else...
I don't know these people.
So, if you look at, if you look at a roadway network, these tan, the lighter tan-colored roads, one is Ravine Parkway, that's a major collector. The other is Joliet Avenue, that's a neighborhood collector. Roadway networks are, they are network, right? They're not disjointed, they're not cut off. So, we do look at this very extensively, look at through each level of our comprehensive plan, along with the 2040, that's where this is pulled from. So, Joliet is a wider road, it's 36 feet wide for that neighborhood collector, so it was planned for that traffic. And also, as Senior Planner Emily Schmitz mentioned, you know, we did plan to have both these roadways go through. Just from an efficiency standpoint, you always want transportation to be connected. You don't want things to be disconnected. We do get that question a lot with developments, but, for example, if this was not connected through here, you know, right now, everyone has to come out this direction. So, if you're going north, or if you're going up Military Road, you have to go this direction. So, it requires more traffic on 70th Street. By connecting them, like we mentioned, a lot of traffic will go in different directions. We don't anticipate everyone to go out to the south. A lot of people in East Ridge Woods will likely go to the north. You probably saw that there were multiple barricades here. For the first many years of East Ridge Woods, the most common complaint was, why don't these roads go somewhere? People were asking for them to connect.
With Military.
Yep, with Military Road. Correct, yep, with Military Road. And that's why there's multiple barricades, because people are actually cutting out on Military. So, it's something we had to work with the county on. So, it's something we've been planning for and always intended to take place, and it's important for us. That's why I put those signs on there to, just to make sure residents are aware that this will extend in the future.
I need to ask you guys to refrain from speaking until you're at the podium. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. If this were not a neighborhood collector, what would the standard width of that road be?
Standard width would be 28 feet wide, so the other roadways within East Ridge Woods are 28 feet wide, as were the roadways within Woodward-Ponds, would be 28 feet wide.
Thank you. Additional questions from the commission? Staff or for the applicant? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Before doing so, I just want to reiterate, as a reminder, if you wish to speak, as part of the public hearing process, you will have two to three minutes to speak. All questions will be, all questions asked during the public hearing are being written down by staff, then after all testimonies... during the public hearing are being written down by staff. Then, after all testimony is given, staff will respond to all questions at once. If there's anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal, please come forward and provide your name and address. I would also like to remind the audience that any additional commentary, clapping, yelling, et cetera, is not allowed. We want to allow due process for everyone here tonight. With that being said, I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Furlough, if you could, please state your name and address for the record again.
Doug Furlough, six, seven, nine, five, Joliet Avenue South. You guys brought up a lot more things I'd like to talk about, but we never were here to just... The Townhome Association and Townhome going in, great, do it. We're all for growth in Cottage Grove. Nobody in East Ridge Woods is opposed of it. Really quick, just things you guys gotta think about. The whole idea of bringing construction down Joliet, get it out of your head. D.R. Horton made it very clear that they did a temporary road, all the construction was done, and then Cottage Grove finished the top of the road and made it complete. If you're gonna bring your construction in, it's gonna have to come down your new little parkway. It's fine. When you open up Joliet, you're right, we're all gonna take that north to Woodbury. You're also gonna get all of our teenagers going to East Ridge. So, be prepared for your residents that you're building for to complain about that. You're talking about a hundred and eighty-three homes. We currently have almost five hundred children in our neighborhood. Just Joliet is one hundred kids between the age of two and ten. They run across the street. We've had three, the reason we're emotional is we've had three really close calls. I literally watched a kid with his head curl up and a bumper squeal to his face. That's why I shake. I watched it happen. You guys are talking about bringing in a hundred and forty Townhome units, two cars per, three hundred. Now, I realize that if you go out to Nineteen, Jamaica, or Seventieth, they're all great main arteries. If you open up Joliet, this is a neighborhood. We actually have a park that has a big draw in our neighborhood. All the kids cross the street to get to. Somebody's gonna get hit. And we had this problem in our, in our, in East Ridge Woods, but we dealt with it internally because we have an HOA. So, we have a Facebook site. We didn't go to the cops. We dealt with the parents and the people who were speeding on the other side, and guess what? This summer, everybody slowed down. We didn't need to get the police involved. It was the best summer we've had. No kids were almost hit. But now, we can't communicate with the other HOA. Now, like I said, you guys brought up all this other stuff. The demographic you think's gonna happen isn't gonna happen. Those are gonna be families. It's not gonna be old people and single people like you think it is. It's not. If those, we thought that this Townhome complex was gonna be in the two-hundred thousand range. Cottage Grove has asked for affordable housing for a long time. We take the brunt of that up on our end because, "Oh, they're just building for you guys." Well, build for some people in Cottage Grove that can afford those houses. Three-hundred and fifty, three-hundred and seventy-five, they might as well come live with us in their own four-thousand-square-foot home. Not a Townhome. We're in the top of a, of a, of a housing market. It's gonna crash. Everybody knows what happened to those Townhome people last time it crashed. They suffered. Anyway, I'm just gonna give my spiel because I got a couple of minutes to do. The issue of safety is the most important reason to oppose this. We have lived in East Ridge Woods for five years now, and Joliet's already a very busy street that has had too many close calls with our children. On Joliet alone, a hundred kids, as I mentioned, this neighborhood has grown, the vehicles traveling is increasing. The fact that you brought up the, the distance of the width of the street, unfortunately, that lends, I'm an insurance agent, okay, so I get these claims with the dead kids. All that does is speed up traffic in a thirty-mile-an-hour zone. We've asked you guys to lower the speed limit there, put in speed bumps, we said no. So, okay. So, you've got this street you wanna add two hundred cars to, that's already, we had a deal internally with thirty-five, forty mile-an-hour, you know, and these kids are getting older. They're all gonna go to East Ridge, they're all gonna head north, and they're all going through your community, and they're gonna speed. You know how teenagers are. So, we're worried about the future and what this brings. All of us, so, so you open it up to us, it's technically an inconvenience for us to go south, thirty seconds, down, you know, over to Nineteen, up to Woodbury when we go to Woodbury. But we're all gonna do it. We're all gonna go north, right through that Townhome. Just human nature. We're gonna, we're gonna decide, "Yep, we're gonna go north," and we're gonna all cut through that neighborhood. You're talking about average three cars per family, a hundred and eighty homes. It's gonna be a lot of traffic. Cottage Grove has done a really good job so far in this area, and I love the fact, I wish you could bring it back. And, you know, this is actually perfect. You take, you take Jamaica, Nineteen, and Seventieth Street, and you guys have done such a good job with the neighborhoods where there's one way in and one way out. We have no unwanted traffic. You could easily have connected all these neighborhoods in there, and we'd all be whipping through, people would be whipping through, but that does not happen. It's one way in and one way out. And when you start connecting things up, all of a sudden, there's pass-through traffic, and, and there's just too much. And twenty years from now, none of this is gonna matter, because there'll be no kids in these neighborhoods. It'll be an old neighborhood like they all become in Cottage Grove. Right now, it's so many kids. It looks like Valley Fair, and you guys are talking about putting a road through Valley Fair. Like, they just run, and we try to control them, but they're kids, and they run in groups of like twenty, and they're excited. They got a school, and they're running all over the dang place. We've already got a problem with the, like I said, we can bring up issues. We've got a problem with the buses going fast, too, but they're gonna be cutting all the way up. And that's the other thing, the schools. Have you guys planned another high school? Two more grade schools? These are not, I'm telling you, these will not be old people, and they will not be single people. This will be families at the three-hundred-thousand-dollar level. They're gonna bring with them two to three kids. Cottage Grove is not prepared to increase another, however many kids they need in these schools. I mean, again, you guys bring up all these new issues that I didn't even come here to bring up.
Mr. Furlough, I want to just remind you that we're trying to be respectful of others' time.
No, no, I understand. They spent a lot of time up here, too, and they have an investment to make, and we, like I said, everybody in East Ridge Woods supports your investment in Cottage Grove. We want it to grow. Everybody on this side, we want this to continue to grow. But you've done it well so far. Why make a cut-through where all of a sudden, the shortcut happens, and you've got a wonderful park, and if you've gone by there, we, please come down our street and look. During a summer day, you've got a hundred kids at that park every time, and they all have to cross the street to get to it. There's no houses on that side. They're cutting across that park. You know, so, it's just one of those things where we're just saying, you know, right now, it's not the time to open up Joliet. You have, you talked about running down a military. Run it now. That milit, old military to Nineteen and Keats, run it right now. That gives you three access points to your Townhome development. You don't need the other two. They serve no purpose. It's a ten-second convenience for the risk and safety of people. Now, I was gonna get into the crime and other things. We won't even get into that. He knows, man. We have them up there all the time. We've had way more crime in East Ridge Woods than anybody thought would ever happen. We're talking about, as an HOA, putting a twenty-five-thousand-dollar system to scan every license plate and camera, everybody who comes in. One entrance, one way in, one way out. We've caught ninety percent of those buggers. And guess what? They don't come from Cottage Grove. They're from everywhere else. But we can catch them, but we can't put in a twenty-five-thousand-dollar system to, to catch them all if we've got three access points. Now, it's a seventy-five-thousand-dollar system, and our HOA can't absorb it. Again, I know you got...
I wanna, I wanna just stop you there. Understand, I can...
We wanna do something.
I, you're, you're emotional because you're concerned, so I, I wanna, I wanna relay this back to you. Here's what I'm hearing, is that you're concerned about the safety of your kids. You're concerned about having increased traffic. I'm, I'm more interested in, you know, we reached out to Public Safety because this had come up before about, about crime, and they went back eighteen months, and they found two reports, reported incidents of theft. So, I mean, I'm, I guess I'd, I'd have to ask, like, if, if you guys are having these concerns, you know, Public Safety is there to address them, you know, but they need to know about them. So, you know, having a Facebook group is great, and I know, I understand.
Caught more than two. They've caught more than two, so that can't be true.
Our information came directly from Public Safety, so...
I'll be going there next, and I'll get your report.
I wish you would, and I wish you'd bring it back.
My gosh, they caught a guy with twenty of our, our garage door openers in his trunk. Why is that not on your report?
Did, did it get reported to the police?
Yeah, the Lexus theft, just happened not too long ago. You know, we catch these guys on cameras all the time.
Okay, well, then you need to be conveying this to Public Safety.
We do. They catch them.
So that they can, so that they can address it.
And they tell us where they're from. It's Maplewood, Oakdale, St. Paul. It's not Cottage Grove.
I'm not here to argue with you. We're here to find, to make findings of fact, so please state, state your case, state your concerns.
Cottage Grove wants to grow. You guys have a, you guys have...
Let's be respectful of others' time.
You guys wanna grow. Grow. Just do it responsibly, smart, safety, and think about your schools, too, because right now, they're packed. You have no more room for these kids. Have you guys planned it?
It's the school district's responsibility to project or forecast demographics.
Right. You're gonna throw it in front of us as a referendum, and we're supposed to just approve it.
Well, that's your right as a citizen to vote for or against it. Wait, here, the podium. Thank you.
No, that's, that's fine. It's, it's fine. The point matter being, just, really, I came here just for Joliet. You guys brought up all kinds of other issues, and those people that are on the backside of Joliet, they're talking about that buffer, what you brought up. You're exactly right. That buffer needs to happen, because those people are gonna have a problem with that.
I need you to rein it in, please, so that we can get other people up here to express their concerns as well.
Fair enough.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the application and provide anything additional or new, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Kyle Richardson. I live at nine, seven, zero, two, sixty-sixth Street South. I just wanna echo everything he said. I a hundred percent agree with everything he said from the, from the standpoint, but I'm just gonna talk on other things that came up, and I kinda took notes during the presentation. One of the questions I had was the, the street size of Joliet, thirty-two feet wide on Joliet. Is it gonna continue to stay at thirty-two feet into the new development, or is it gonna shrink down to twenty-eight feet, like you guys said, from a standard street? The other question I had is, you know, you guys said that these are planned to go through Joliet and, I don't know what the other street, Jaclyn or something like that? So, you said they're planned. I'm just curious to why there's two fire hydrants at the end of them. If they're planned, that's gonna, to me, it sounds like a, a waste of taxpayers' dollars to move the fire hydrants from their current location, which is in the middle of those streets, to move them off to the side. I feel like if it was planned from the get-go, it should've been off to the side, because there's, you know, usually a ten-foot easement or whatever easement on the roads. I feel that if it was continuously planned and accounted for, we won't be wasting people's money or time. Again, some of the other things, the safety concerns. So, I live on Sixty-sixth and Joliet in the corner there. There's only one stop sign. I've seen numerous times, I mean, I'm sitting on the stop sign, cars from the other direction are flying through, not paying attention, again, near accidents, near misses. My concern is, in order, I don't know if this is, I brought this up in the mission, or the meeting before, so I don't know how to work this pen. Let me try it like this. So, there's a stop sign there, but not on this side, and again, if we're opening these traffic up on Joliet at thirty miles an hour, if we don't put a stop sign on this corner here, there will be accidents and numerous of them on that side. Again, child safety is the biggest concern. Buses flying through like they did, or they do. Let's see, what else do I have? And I think that's it. I think that's all I have for, for that. But as far as the, the Townhome Association, I wanna check out the North St. Paul ones. They look great. They're beautiful. I think they would be a nice addition, but again, with proper safety precautions, connected in the developments, however that's done. I would prefer a four-way stop, but it doesn't meet the city's requirement for four-way stops, but it sounds like it's gonna be done anyways. My other frustration, which is just against is the watershed area. When I purchased my property a year and a half ago, they told me it wasn't gonna be developed. So, that's just a little annoyance on my part. I know the properties behind would've been sold and demolished as planned, but other than that, it's, that's my viewpoint on it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Again, anyone else wishing to approach the podium and state your, or add anything additional or new, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Jerome Knutson. My address is sixty-five, twenty, Keats Avenue South. I'm one of the landowners that's adjacent to the proposed development. I guess my biggest concern is, I'm president-owner of Arbor Hill Tree Farm, and obviously, with the number of proposed, you know, incoming residents that would be there, obviously, my biggest concern is safety. Here you have city that's going to come in with meeting agriculture. So, obviously, as far as our operation, at that, at this point, we have seventeen acres that we intend to continue to operate as a tree farm. So, my biggest concern, and I actually have talked to the owner of Don A., and he's seemed very receptive, but obviously, at some point, on the west side of our property, we'd like to see some type of fencing so that we don't have an issue, you know, that's what we're most concerned about, is people entering our property, don't realize, you know, the size of equipment we use, that type of thing. So, just wanna bring that up.
So, just as far as kinda having a more defined barrier between your property and the adjacent property?
Exactly. Just, you know, just a nice border so that, you know, there are times where we use, you know, we, our operation has gone to more, much larger trees. So, at some point, we use a very large truck, digs a ninety-inch hole. It's a massive hole. You could fall in there. So, I'm worried about kids, dogs, potential issues with, you know, my biggest concern is safety for the people don't, that are gonna join neighbors, they're gonna be there, don't realize that, you know, they think this is some...
Park or preserve, green space, something like that. Yeah, you don't want anyone getting hurt there. And then, you know, you had mentioned that you had spoke to Don A., excuse me, Don A., and they had, they were pretty receptive to these, to this, to this conversation. So, I'm sure we can get with staff and have them follow up on this.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Anybody wishing to speak for or against, add anything new?
All right, so Kyle Richardson back up here again. So, one of the things I forgot to talk about is I used to live in a Townhome Development, which had ample amount of overspaced parking, overflow parking. When I'm looking at this property map, I only see three parking areas for a hundred and sixty-two units. I mean, granted, there's probably, what, I don't know, eight there, I don't know, twelve there, four there. I mean, that just seems like a lack of extra parking. So, where is this overflow parking gonna go for residents?
There's a good answer for that. It's, I'm gonna let staff follow up on that.
Okay, perfect.
But that's already been taken into account.
Oh, perfect. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to invite anyone else up to add any commentary. Seeing none at this time, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing from the commission.
Chair Cambada, before you close the public hearing, could staff respond to the questions from...
Yeah, if they'd like, yeah, if you could, please.
Yep, so I will tackle the parking question, and so our zoning code requires one additional, or they call it a guest parking space per dwelling unit, per ten dwelling units, excuse me. So, they require twenty-four parking spaces per the code for additional guest parking. They are proposing twenty-six spaces. So, ultimately, the applicant is meeting the zoning requirements for the additional parking. And then, the second thing I will address is Mr. Knutson's request for the fencing. That is, in fact, been added as a condition of approval. So, the developer has accepted and will be installing a fence on that west side of Mr. Knutson's property.
Okay. And then, any additional questions or comment for the staff or...
Mr. Chair, I'll let Ryan address the, I believe there were three or four other points.
Oh, okay.
Ryan will answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'll talk through some of the other questions, some we have covered. Construction traffic, you're definitely right. That's common for us. We do not allow, unless it has to, construction traffic go through an existing development. They mentioned that they'll develop from north to south, so they'll come off Ravine Parkway. They also have the option to use Military Road until it's removed, since that road would be removed. There's no reason to damage the new Ravine Parkway, not damage, but, you know, put heavy traffic on the Ravine Parkway until it's necessary. But we'll work with that on their grading permits and throughout their construction process. We also work through the billing department. Once you get into actual home construction, it's not such heavy equipment, but we still like them to use that main road of Ravine Parkway to get into the development. Regarding, you know, more discussion on the connection and, and the cut-through discussion, there was discussion on one way in and one way out for most developments, but we do always plan for several ways in and out of development. Part of it's fire access. To date, you know, the, the option of coming off Military Road was still there for Public Safety if needed. That would be going away with the trail. But if you look to the west, this development of Caden Glen, you've got a development here, access that started with Seventieth. Grayson Metals connected up to Ravine Parkway. Kingston Fields came out Sixty-seventh Street and Sixty-sixth up to Ravine Parkway and Jamaica. So, there's four access points to that development. We don't think of it as cut-through. You're using the, the best access point from your neighborhood. In, in this case, you've got Joliet Avenue. It's been planned. It's a planned point of, of kind of a main road of that neighborhood collector, similar that we have through all of the other... similar that we have through all of our other developments. It's very important to have those neighbor, neighborhood collectors. Um, they are built a little wider, 36 feet wide. Um, that's mostly because we still do plan for parking, snow storage, you know, things in the winter. We had a lot of snow last winter. We have to have room, um, to get through there a little more often, because we actually plow those with a little more regularity. Um, and they, they just, they get more snow, because it's a bigger road, so you need more snow storage. So that plays into it as well. Uh, the, the street width, it will be 36 feet, all the way up through the development, up through this new development, um, as it is today. Uh, the two fire hydrants, so we do get that question a lot. Um, what that is, those are the water main stubs. When we build water main, we need that hydrant to flush out the dead ends, and we need it to get the air out of the line. So those are the high points in the line. So we have to actually get the air out through those hydrants. But we don't plan on having a hydrant off to the side there, because we have specific hydrant spacing, uh, for fire spacing and fire access, things like that. And that location where they are today isn't where we'll have a permanent one. That's a developer who paid to put those hydrants in, so not, not taxpayers. It's a developer that pays to take it out and relocate it. We likely will reuse that, that hydrant, um, so it won't go to waste. We will be adding the stop sign on Joliet Avenue and 66th Street. That's just the, the nature of how that one built out. Um, you know, now it's, functions as kind of a three-way intersection. It will be an all-way intersection now, um, and it'll have a side stop on both sides. So we will add that additional stop sign that was requested. That'll be part of our plan review, I believe, is in our plan review comments. Uh, and then one other mention was about the watershed area. And it, there's been a lot of talk of the watershed area. The real area that would never develop, and we say never develop, it's this area out here. This is the area that was planned for the ponding. It goes up, it goes through Ravine Parkway. This was some additional land that the watershed did acquire. It's always been planned for development for quite some time. It's, it was in our 2030 comp plan, which was done in 2008. So it has been planned. It was owned by the watershed, but it's something that we did intend to develop. Um, I think that was all the additional questions, but I can respond to any of the commission may have.
Questions for staff? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone else in the audience has any additional comment or questions? No? Then at this time, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing from the commission.
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close from Commissioner Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Frazier. Public hearing is closed. As a reminder to the planning commissioners and those in the audience and watching on TV, the planning commission is tasked with specific findings of fact when considering an application. The planning commission must ensure that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that it does not detrimentally impact surrounding properties. With that, does the planning commission wish to discuss the application before us?
So, in reading the brief and hearing public testimony and, um, staff tonight, I've come to ask a couple of questions, several of which were answered. Um, you know, does this conform with the 2030 and 2040 comp plans as it pertains to land use and zoning? Um, the answer is yes. Uh, that's important, because that's what's gonna guide our, you know, what, how we can act on this application. Does the planning, does the application conform with the East Ravine Master Plan? Yes, it does. Again, are we staying consistent with what we told the public we were gonna do with this land? And then additionally, with the concerns regarding the safety and use of Jocelyn and Joliet, were they constructed with the intent to be connected to this proposed development? And, um, you know, as staff has indicated, uh, yes, that was the intent all along. As, um, Mr. Furlock had noted, you know, there are some legitimate concerns with regard to safety and the speed that people are driving there. And, you know, I actually grew up on a, a similar, what we would call a neighborhood collector. And, um, I was that kid, you know, when I, when I was younger, I almost T-boned a car on my big wheel. So I, I think those are legitimate concerns, but I have to ask, you know, that doesn't rise to the level of stopping somebody else's proper use and development of their land. I think what we need to do is we need to get Public Safety involved with your community a little bit more to put an end to that. So, can I have you, this needs to be on record. So can I have you step up to the podium and, yeah?
Sorry, I don't understand the process. I just don't know. Are you guys the ones in Public Safety that put in speed bumps and speed limits and-
So, so this is-
Stoplights and roundabouts? We can't even get on to 70th right now, is it?
This is, this is a perfect topic for next month's planning commission during the open forum section. And, and, yeah, this is something that, um, through City staff and through, um, Public Safety, they should be able to address these things. You're not the first neighborhood to have these types of issues. And as long as we make it known, which you have by, by being here tonight, and I would anticipate that you'll be at next month's meeting, or the fourth Monday of every month.
Sorry to be unprofessional. I just kinda look at it as a communal thing, like, I, I've been in Cottage Grove for 44 years. I may not be as professional.
And, you know, and I, I've only been here-
We just talk things out.
I've only been here for 33 years.
All right.
But, uh, but, I mean, your concerns are not unwarranted, and they're not uncommon. But, you know, let's go through the proper process here, and, and this is, you know, step one. Let's get you to the open forum next month, and let's identify where the problem areas are and get the right people involved.
Fair enough.
Uh, Director Costello?
Uh, Chair Kambata and fellow planning commissioners and residents, uh, what staff will do is we'll reach out to Public Safety and have them get in contact with you to talk about extra patrols and so forth. But staff will begin that line of communication with Public Safety to meet with you, uh, to see what can be done to improve that.
Okay, that's, that's my take on it. Any additional comment from the commission?
Yeah, there.
Commissioner Wright?
I, I just wanna thank you guys for coming here. It's, you know, we encourage it. You guys, you know, you give us perspective sometimes that we don't see. Um, I would be just as ticked off if, you know, one of my kids or one of my neighbor kids almost got, almost got hit. You know, I mean, that's enough to send me overboard as well, so. But remember that this is one step of the process. This is gonna be a lot of different steps, a lot of different parts of it. So, you know, keep your cool with it. Um, there's a lot of people, and, and you're, you're, trust me, I've seen worse. But, yeah, you're concerned. I, I get it. And remember that we're all citizens in this community, too. We're, we're just as concerned, man. Um, but, so, stay involved with the process. Make sure you're reaching out to, not just, you know, coming to the meetings here, but the staff. The staff is very helpful. Um, they're, they're willing to help out, and we'll answer those questions, okay? So, thank you.
And in many cases, the staff are your neighbors. So if you have a concern, chances are, they do, too.
I go to that neighborhood all the time. I, I play Uber for my kids, go into a friend's house, man, trust me, I get it. I've seen people just like blazing through there, so. Yeah, right? So, again, we, we hear you, man, so, we hear all you.
So, I mean, yeah, do we have any other questions or concerns about the development? I guess at this time, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the zoning amendment in the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Frazier. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Wright. Further discussion on the topic? Nope. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item number seven on our agenda, it's gonna be approval of planning commission minutes for November 25th, 2019. If, uh, if there are no changes or corrections, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Frazier. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Knable.